Very good. 6:00 PM, we will call this regular meeting of the Town of Florence Planning and Zoning Commission to order. And first order of business is roll call. Madi Sella, if you would please.
Commissioner Vanderstark is not present. Commissioner Kapulongo?
Present.
Commissioner Pro?
Present.
Vice Chair Adam?
Present.
Chairman Frost?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. If you would all please rise, Commissioner Pro will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and for the religion for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Well now do our call to the public. Call to the public for a public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Individual commission members may respond to criticisms made, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the commission shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. And with that, is there anyone that would like to address the commission this evening? And it doesn't look like we have anyone online that is waiting to address us either, unless I'm missing. Would you check just to make sure that's true, Madi Sella?
If you're online and you want to do call to the public, please raise your hand. No.
Okay. Seeing no one jumping up to address us, we will close the call to public and move, go to Agenda Item 6, Discussion Approval Disapproval of the Minutes of the Special Meeting Conducted on October 19th, 2023. And with that, commission members, any concerns, comments, discussion on that item? And I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the meeting, regular meeting of Thursday, October 19th, 2023.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Vice Chair Adam and a second by Commissioner Kapulongo for approval of the minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's like we have four ayes on that one, Madi Sella. Thank you. Okay. Agenda Item Number 7, Presentation slash Public Hearing slash Recommendation of Approval slash Approval with Conditions or Denial of Development Code Amendments for Chapter 150. Madi Sella, are you doing this one?
Yes.
Okay.
With assistance from Andrew during one part. Coming back before the commission is the code amendments for Chapter 150, the Development Code. This is to help clean up some inconsistencies between the district use regulations and the list of uses in the zoning district categories, as well as updating terms that need to be defined, overall update or clarified, and then to also update some approval processes, expiration timeframes of preliminary plat, and then policy considerations such as new uses and limitations on other uses. So Planning and Zoning Commission did review these amendments on October 6, 2022, and it came back to the commission again for another review in April, on April 6 of 2023. A joint work session took place with Town Council back in October of 2023. These meetings included amendments to, that were agreed upon, and changes were worked out. These items that were bringing forward are, were advertised through two newspaper ads in December in the Panal Central Dispatch, and this public hearing will be tonight, and then there will be another, will there be public hearing tonight as well as the recommendation for action, and then there will be another public hearing with Town Council as well as action in the second reading. Now, we have made some updates to these amendments.
I'm sorry, excuse me, Madi. Did you say that this is an action, so we're making a recommendation tonight?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
We did make some updates to these code amendments since the work session based on comments that were made, not only by the commissioners and the council members, but also some comments from the public that we received and developers. The first was the proposed amendment to the PUD to make it a two-step process where there was a preliminary and then a final PUD. That we scrapped entirely, and we're just going to retain the current one-step process for approving planned unit developments, just to keep it simple. We also rewrote the definition of group homes. One of the thing, one of the things our code lacked was a definition for group homes. Thus, we made in addition in that format and included standard stipulations for staff to use to approve group homes within that definition, and that included a 1,200-foot radius separation between a group home, between group homes and a residential area. I'll go into that more in depth in this presentation. And then we also deleted the definition of payday loan establishments, and the use is not specifically recognized as permitted within the town. We also added, under agrivoltake farms, that as a permitted use in RA4, as asked for in the previous work session. And we also changed the parking requirement for convenience store and gas, with gas, from one space or two, one space per 200 square feet of gross floor area. And I'll go further depth with that later on. So to first, we'll start with group homes. There's currently no definition, so we added this definition seen here. A residential home or buildings licensed by the Arizona State Department of Health Services for not more than 10 unrelated individuals in a residential setting providing living facilities and sleeping rooms, and which also provides limited services such as, but not limited to, meals, services to promote emotional support, life skill development, caring for the ambulatory aged or infirm, and/or employment training, and which the operator provides or contracts to provide 24-hour supervisory care services on a continuous basis. The limitation of 10 or fewer persons does not include the operator or the facility members of the operator's family or persons employed as staff. Types of group home facilities include youth foster care homes, assisted living facilities, and behavioral health care facilities. Group homes are permitted by right only if the conditions listed below are met. Based upon site plan or view, staff may add additional conditions of approval if deemed necessary to protect the health, safety, and public welfare. So the first one is the group home shall not be located on a lot within 1,200 feet measured by a straight line in any direction from another group home as measured from property line to property line. Number two, the residential character of the exterior of the structure shall be maintained. Number three, signs related to the group home shall not be allowed. Four, all required licenses and certifications shall be obtained from the appropriate state agency prior to the issuance of a business license. Five, all requirements of the applicable state and/or Town of Florence Building Code, Fire Code, and Zoding Ordinance as amended from time to time shall be complied with prior to the issuance of a business license. And six, a group home shall not generate vehicular traffic in greater volume than that normally expected in a residential district in which the group home is located. I'll have Andrew come up and show the sample mapping.
Okay, so I created a couple of visual examples just to demonstrate what the 1,200 feet would look like, since for me, that's at least a little bit abstract sounding without seeing it. 1,200 feet is just under a quarter of a mile. Quarter mile is 13, 20 feet. So I have two examples here, one in the Anthem area and then one in the old part of town. And I just want to clarify upfront that both of these examples are completely theoretical and hypothetical, and there are no group homes currently on these parcels. I just picked up place and then generated a buffer. So you can see here, we're in the Anthem area, and the purpose of doing two different examples is that Anthem has a lot more cul-de-sacs, whereas the older part of town is on a grid system. And 1,200 feet covers a different number, you know, of lots on a cul-de-sac versus a grid. The number still, we think, is going to work for both, but I just wanted to show for clarification purposes. So this is the one up in Anthem. You can see clearly all the cul-de-sacs, and if that home on the corner were to be a group home. The one other thing to clarify is on the edges of the circle, we do measure this from the property lines, so if it touches it at all, then a group home would not be there around the edge, right? So you can see some of them, it's like halfway covered by the circle. Those would still not be permitted to have a group home. Now, if you were to do some redrawing of lines and everything, then you could get there, but for this purpose, no. And then here's the example within town. Again, you can see some of them, it covers about half of it, that would not be permitted there or anywhere within the circle.
Are there any questions or comments for the group home section?
First of all, thank you. We appreciate the visual.
Just one question with regard to Anthem. Does, you know, does that community HOA allow for group homes? Is that?
Yeah. Do you want to answer that? Because yes, they do allow for group homes, but I know for the 55-plus community, there might be a little few more stipulations, especially when it comes to age restrictions.
Okay, thank you.
Nice, nice. Okay, thank you, Madi Sella. Please proceed.
How do I close? Oh, there it goes. So the next section we have is for new and amended definitions. So we added the agrivoltaic farming. We did some research and found a basic definition of the land use for both agriculture and solar photovoltaic energy generation, and then we allowed it in the rural agricultural with 10 acres or 4 acres, and then have it as conditional use permit in light industrial and heavy industrial areas. We removed the definition of halfway house. And then for kennel, we had any premises where, instead of four, we added five, and this is for commercial, or we added in there that commercial kennel regulations are found in the Town of Florence Arizona Code of Ordinances and reference the chapter. And then for public utility facilities, we added a definition in there to clarify what that means specifically. And then we added transitional housing in a way to replace halfway house, but to be more specific about what it is. A facility for housing rehabilitation and training of more than six individuals after release from institutional housing, criminal activity, mental health, and or drug addiction that is designed to facilitate readjustment to independent living arrangements. So this replaces halfway house, and it is permitted in light industrial and heavy industrial districts with a conditional use permit. Are there any questions on the definitions? For the district use regulations table, we made some changes in order to remove or add some things that were presented or not. We did remove manufactured home as a conditional use in single-family residential R-118 We added tattoo establishment as permitted in the neighborhood business in downtown We added off-track bedding as permitted in the highway business zoning B2, tourist commercial districts and downtown commercial districts, and require conditional use permit in the neighborhood business B1 and professional office PO. We added pawn shops as permitted in highway business B2 District and require a conditional use permit in the neighborhood business B1 District. We added assembly within closed area as permitted in a highway business B2 and tourist commercial areas, and require conditional use permit in neighborhood business downtown commercial. And this is consistent with where movie theaters are allowed. Then we added gasoline dispensing and services as permitted in highway business B2 and tourist commercial, as well as in light industrial and heavy industrial. As beforehand, it was kind of mixed up about where it was allowed and whether it was allowed with conditional or if it was just permitted outright. In addition, we did add printing shops as requiring conditional use permit in the neighborhood business or B1 District. And then we added in the query as requiring a conditional use permit in heavy industrial district and not permitted in light industrial. So from those examples, some of them that were put in there to clarify was the gasoline dispensing and service. As I said before, it kind of had a T slash P, so you're looking, is it permitted or not permitted? Which one do I choose? So to straighten that out, we just made it permitted within the highway business, tourist commercial, light industrial, heavy industrial. For manufactured home sales, it was also noted as P slash C or permitted slash conditional in B2 TRC, light industrial, heavy industrial. So staff suggests that it just be noted as conditional only in B2 and light industrial and permitted in heavy industrial. And this is manufactured home sales, just to clarify that. Pharmacies, they were broken down as less than and greater than 10,000 square feet and noted as permitted slash conditional, so we straightened that out. To just say that pharmacies, less than 10,000 square feet be noted as permitted in neighborhood office and in downtown commercial, and then pharmacies over 10,000 square feet be noted as conditional in the B1, professional office and downtown commercial. Any questions on these?
I had raised this at the work session with council.
Okay.
On the pawn shops as permitted in highway business B2 District and conditional use permit. I asked why this was being added. Had anyone asked for this? Had we had an application? And the answer was no.
Yes. So no, yeah, you're correct. No one had asked for it.
Someone did ask for it.
No. No one's asked for it. We were just trying to be proactive.
Happy putting this into the district. So if no one's asking for it, I'm asking, why are we codifying something that some of us who live in the district don't want?
We do have a chapter on pawn shops, and that's why we are thinking to put it in the district tables, to clarify where it can and cannot go.
So this is not an amendment? This has always been there?
The chapter's been there, but it doesn't specify in what districts it can go in.
So can we specify not in the downtown district? I'm trying to get at why we're doing this.
If I might, if you would, please clarify the B2 highway business and the neighborhood business. Does the town downtown fall within either of those?
No. So we're not permitting it in downtown commercial.
Neighborhood office, we do have zoning for that. I understand the highway, that's, that's different.
Oh, neighborhood offices, it's neighborhood business district, which is a B1.
Different than a neighborhood office.
Neighborhood office, yes.
Thank you.
Good point.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's a good clarification.
Any other questions? Some other examples is we needed to match this table and nor with our written portion of our zoning. So in Chapter 150.060 with the B2 and the permitted uses, since we do have the sale of new or used automobiles, trucks, boat trailers, and recreational vehicles, that's changed in the table to, I believe, conditional now. So we struck, we're going to strike those out, sale of new manufactured homes, sale of new and used automobiles, so on and so forth, and move it to the conditional section in that written portion in order to match up with the table, so there's no confusion with the current and future planners here. And that is something that's going to similarly happen to other sections where we have the match from the table to what is written down. The next Development Code amendments that were agreed upon is preliminary plat approval Now, this one was kind of more or less up in the air, is the preliminary plat along with conditions attached to its approval, so that will be going forward, but whether it be for a town council for consideration, we added that as a change. And then the council shall approve or deny or conditionally approve the preliminary plat. And then, no preliminary plat may be continued tabled for more than two consecutive regular meetings. Those are the changes we made. I know there was discussion at the work session about whether to move forward with that. Are we good with having it go, preliminary plats going to planning and zoning and to town council?
I noticed that we had one written comment asking that this not happen. What was the driving force to do this? Just remind us again, it's just been too much time.
The driving force was with recent old preliminary plats coming back through, making sure that all eyes see the preliminary plat going through, as well as what's conditions that are attached to those preliminary plat approvals. So town council will have full information when going into the final plat approval. That was the reasoning behind this change. But as you stated, we did get some comments from development community saying this is just one more step that adds four weeks to our entire process in moving forward with preliminary plats.
I, I have a comment on the last line about no preliminary plat may be continued tabled for more than two consecutive regular meetings. Why is that there?
It was originally part of that we just added in that specifies regular meetings. So that's already in the code.
I do not agree. As you know, we went through an issue with one of our reviews, and the issue had to do with minutes, but nonetheless, we had tabled the item for two meetings because we were not getting the answers that the commission was asking for. And I'm not happy that that takes away our vote, and should we still have issues, what happens? It's automatically passed along?
If I may, I don't mean to cut you off, but the way I'm looking at that is if we don't get the answers we want, if it's not resolved after we've tabled it for two meetings, it's dead.
Yeah, at that point, you can vote it down or move it forward.
I mean, that puts more of the, the onus to get things right on staff and the developers and everybody else involved before it gets to us.
Well, would we have the option to continue? I mean, I, I don't want to kill it after two meetings.
No, but, but as was the case in the last, the case the last time, we weren't getting the information we wanted, we weren't getting the answers we wanted, so it had to come back to us. If after doing that twice, we're still not getting the information we want, it's dead.
I think Mr. Harmer has a comment.
The acting town manager bet me I couldn't go through this without talking. Keep in mind, what you're seeing in red are the suggested changes, either rem, and black is already in the code in the text right now. But Commissioner Kapulongo was close. It doesn't become dead, but you have to take an action based on the way that's written. So if your action is recommendation for denial, that's what it would be, or denial. If, if this particular section sending a preliminary plat to council were not to be approved, then you would, you could kill it, and they would have to start over with a new application, the way it's worded right now. And I didn't beat this behind, I mean, this is not unusual. The Florence Code is not unusual in this regard. You'll see this in development codes and zoning ordinances all, all over the state, all over the country, that, you know, that it prevents a commission and/or a council from stretching out a project for, forever. It gets to a definitive end so that it puts the property owner and the applicant on notice. You know, you need to fix it, or you're going to start over in your process.
That's actually something we've been pushing for.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good to see you again.
Any more comments on this part? So in conjunction with that, we did do a survey on what other cities and towns do in terms of this preliminary plat process. We did find it more or less 50/50 with whichever town or city we looked at. Those who had a P&amp;Z commission review and approval, or council and P&amp;Z commission review approval included Chandler, Queen Creek, Goodyear, Prescott. Those who only had the P&amp;Z commission review and approval, Glendale, Avondale, Miranda, Coolidge, all in similar stages of development or of, were of that time, went through that stage of development like we did. So it was hard to, just based off our research, say whether or not this was fully best practice. Continue on with preliminary and final plat. We included the extension, extension of the time period of approval. We kind of got a resounding shake of a nod of our heads on this one, where the approval is valid of a preliminary plat for a period instead of 12 months, we struck that out and we put in 24 months from the date of council approval. If we do the whole taking it from P&amp;Z and to council, even if it's just P&amp;Z, the approval date would be extended to 24, not just 12 months. And this gives developers more time to get what they needed done or get the answers they need to as well. And the next is for final plats. If the approved final plat is not recorded within 12 months from the date of approval by the town council, the approval shall expire. The expired final plat may be reapproved if it meets all current engineering standards, including any new standards that may have been adapted by the town council during that 12-month period. This is, we have plats that were approved and then have been sitting for several years, and then they come back around and record. So this way, we can get them recorded in a timely manner, and they just don't kind of sit there, proof, but not signed off on. Any questions on these amendments?
I think you definitely get, probably saw head nods from all of us on the 12-month on final plat, because we appreciate that because of some of the issues that we're dealing with on some of these older plats right now.
Right.
So on the preliminary plat approval, there's a six-month extension that can be granted by council. Is that a one-six month, or can it also come back for another six month?
Just a one. Go ahead and speak on that later. I see you're ready.
No, the way it's set up in our code now, you'd have one shot at an extension. And again, that portion will either say council or Planning and Zoning Commission, depending on the final outcome and your recommendation to council. Just as a little bit of background, and some of you are probably already aware of this, one of the reasons for the extension is first of all, you were going to 24 months, you were getting some, you know, requests to reapprove plats that had 12 months or that are 18 months were gone, whatever. And because of the nature of the amount of work it takes to file a final plat, you know, the final plat requires engineered drawings for, depending on whether it's in our service area or Epcores, but they still have to provide full engineering drawings at that stage for a final plat. And to get all of those prepared in a timely manner, 12 months, to meet the 12-month deadline is, you know, pretty difficult in a lot of cases, and especially when you're getting as busy, you know, servicing communities like ours that are really starting to feel growth again. So this allows a period of time to actually get the work done on their part in a more effective way. effective way. And then, and then the second part of this is the final plat. One of the problems we have with final plats, if it's approved and not recorded, then what happens if engineering standards change? We don't have the ability as a town to go back to that final plat and have it adjusted and updated to the current standards. By putting a 12-month time limit on it, then we have that ability.
If I may, and it may be too late to do this, I would just say, if you can, change it from a six-month extension to one six-month extension.
Okay.
Just for clarification, because that could, you could be argued that a six-month extension doesn't limit it to just one time.
Right.
Just so in layman's terms and Mr. Harmer's explanation, so we might expect a better end result, right, with this type of planning and phasing that by the time we get to final, it's been well-vetted.
Right. Chairman, Vice Chair Adam, that's exactly the premise behind that, is to make sure that whatever is actually going to be going in the ground is the most current, in whether it's health, safety, welfare issues, you know, it'll fall, everything will fall into one of those categories. And so we want to make sure it's the most current that's available to the community.
The next is exemptions for zoning requirements for American and Arizona flags. We struck out the American flag and their State of Arizona flags on ground-mounted poles not exceeding 20 feet in height and displayed in compliance with federal law. We struck that out because it was for both residential and commercial. We added in, with your suggestions, the American flag and the State of Arizona flag on ground mounted poles not exceeding 20 feet in height in residential zoning districts, and not extending more than 10 feet above the roof of a building in commercial and industrial zoning districts. And are exempt from these regulations providing, provided installations in compliance with applicable federal and state laws. So I thought, those were, that was formulated from the suggestions from the three meetings that we've had. And I've gotten kind of a consensual nod from the commission each time. So if there's any further comments, suggestions open at this time.
Thumbs up, commissioners? Okay, we're good, Marty, thank you.
For parking requirements for convenience store, we have for convenience stores with gas pumps, currently one per each gas pump plus one space per every 75 square feet of gross floor area. We've had recent Circle K's or other gas stations looking in this area, and they found the amount of parking they needed with that standard was excessive, especially with the convenience stores they run now going over 5,000 square feet, which is much larger than the smaller ones that used to be here. I will put that down then.
And Marty, does the one space per every 200 square feet, does that, is that mirror what other municipalities are doing?
Yes. So most were either between 200 or 300, depending on where you were at. So we switched it to one space per every 200 square feet of gross floor area. We didn't think net was really necessary in this situation. Any questions? Okay.
We're good, thank you, Marty.
That concludes the presentation for the code amendments that I have. If there are any further questions about what was in the packet or the exhibits, we are open at this time for questions. If not, then we can go ahead and open for the public hearing. For, as discussed before, there will be this public hearing for tonight. We will ask for a recommendation from planning and zoning commission, and then from there we go to town council in February. And we plan to have that February 5th, the first reading for the code amendments, and then February 19th be the second reading of the code amendments. And the public hearing will take place on February 5th with that first reading.
Do we have some technology concerns?
I'm just being nosy, making sure everything's working.
Okay. Before we turn it over, open it up for public discussion, commissioners, are there any other questions at this point in time? Okay, with that, we'll, since this is a public hearing, we'll open the, this to the public for any discussion or questions or concerns that you'd like to raise. Anyone like to address this item, since this is a public hearing? Not seen anyone respond, we will close the public hearing and bring this back to the commission for a motion or discussion if needed.
I'll make a motion that we approve. The development code amendments for Chapter 150 is read tonight.
And just to clarify that, and that's with the clarification that Commissioner Kapalongo made about the one-six month extension, correct?
With the clarification of the one-six month extension on a preliminary plat.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion for approval with that stipulation by Vice Chair Adam and a second by Commissioner Kapalongo. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Looks like we're four aye votes on that, Mari Sella. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, new business. C.D. Farms Planned Unit Development Work Session. I believe we have representatives of the developer and owner here this evening, and so, gentlemen, if you would, when you come up, if you'd please introduce yourselves and give us name and all that good stuff for the record.
Hello, and Happy New Year to everyone. I'm Chris Dobson, and I have Ryan Weeds here with me as well. I was going to give you first the introduction of C.D. Farms and how I actually came to the name, because there's a little bit of a history background of it, and then there's also some deep meaning to me as well, as we're going through this project. But is that okay, Brian, if I didn't do that? So our family purchased the land, and it was a farm, and we leased it to the Layton family, which was, they just farmed directly to the west of us. But the farm was in such disarray, and it wasn't, it wasn't water-efficient as well, and then they just gave up because they didn't want to farm it anymore. So I came in with my family, and we re-engineered the ground so that way it would be water-efficient, so we wouldn't be wasting water. And when we re-leveled it and made all the improvements, we made it an efficient farm. And then in about 2010, 2012, we've had interest from people wanting to purchase the land. And, you know, we've had, thinking about it and this and that, but since this land actually has a deep meaning to me, so during that time when we were rehabbing that land and fixing it, I had my son Chandler, and we would always come early in the morning, come and fix, lay everything out, getting it all re-engineered, and then slightly, when we had that done, my son passed away. And so whenever I come to this area, I just always envision it of being, I always see my son, and I have that fond memory of that place. And but with that, I did want to make it something special for the town of Florence. I just don't want it to be turn around and flip and sell the dirt and move on. I want to do something nice where families could come in, they can have their children, they can have nice areas where they can come and play and have their athletics, and, because I do know, you know, housing development's a little bit different, you know, they're putting more houses in per acre, so you have to have nice, good, common, community areas. And so that portion of it is important to me. And then, you know, I've driven quite around the valley, like in Queen Creek and Gilbert, and seen how some of those communities have, have done, and I think they've done really well, and so I've been, you know, working with some of the other builders, and just getting ideas with them and trying to emulate what, what they have done as like an agritopia or as per se, that Morrison Ranch area where the open area, so when you drive by it, you see it, and you look at this development, and you're like, man, I want to come and live in this area. And so that's what I'm, that's my vision, and that's what I'm trying to accomplish to, with the town of Florence. And all the engineering and technical issues, I have Ryan here, and so Ryan can walk you through that as well. But again, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody.
Ryan Weed with Cohen Van Loue, consultant CVL. Our address is 4550 North 12th Street in Phoenix. What you have in your packet is, and what we have here on the screen are some examples or exhibits of the project that Chris just mentioned. We appreciate him contracting with us and allowing us as a design firm to help fulfill his, his vision, his personal goals he has for the property, as well as his family's goals for the property, and seeing it forward to a future development. As I think, as you know, Chris has a deep connection not only to the property, but is also very heavily invested in Florence, and really wants to see this project turn into something that he can be proud of, his family can be proud of, and will benefit the community in the long term. We don't see this as being a short-term project. Vice Chair asked us here before the hearing, you know, how, how long we thought this project might, might go on for, and we see it, you know, probably breaking ground within the next couple of years, but then probably taking about eight to 10 years after that to develop. Of course, we want it to be quicker, but as you know, and as you see development occur in other municipalities and even here in Florence now, the homes don't just fall out of the sky. It takes the home builder a while to build out each phase, it takes quite a while, the machinery that takes place onsite, all the equipment that rolls in, all the utility improvements, all that just simply takes time. And so it's not a short-term project. I don't know how many exhibits, Mari Sella, you think I should go through, but some of these are already in your packet, so we're happy to maybe answer questions, chairman of commissioners you might have, or I can continue and scroll through some of these slides that you already have probably seen in your packet.
I think we appreciate, appreciate the narrative. I think we appreciate Mr. Dobson's, you know, thought process with this, and would like, I think we'd like to hear from the design firms how you're taking that thought process and going to create something here, rather than have us try to interpret it from the print. If you'd give us a little bit more depth and breadth, we'd appreciate it, I think.
Not a problem at all. So this is the existing zoning map here on the screen. This is our proposed zoning. So we are proposing it to be a PAD zone property. As a part of that zoning, we've got a different, quite a variety of land uses, predominantly residential, of course, with some multifamily or higher-density parcel, as well as the commercial corner proposed. Within the residential, though, we're not looking at this as being, you know, one lot size. We really wanted to approach the project, given the long-term aspect, and like I mentioned, the eight-to-10-year build-out. We know that home buyer preferences, affordability, what home builders see the market, what hits the market for home builders changes over that period. And so we wanted to ask the town and staff and yourselves for some flexibility in the type of product that we're going to be providing. And so some of it is going to be traditional, single-family detached community, developed homes that you'll see in other communities. We actually reached out to a couple of home builders that are very interested in the project and talked to them about what are they building now in Queen Creek and Chandler? What do they see potentially being built here over the next eight, you know, eight-to-10 year period? And so that we could make sure that we're providing a good variety of home product, not just your typical 45, 50, 55-foot wide lots, but actually some other more attainable housing that we think helps, helps meet maybe where the market is at today. But that doesn't mean that's all we're doing. We're looking at, at larger lots also. We're looking at RV product, for example, something that's very popular in, I think, in other, in other parts of the valley, being something that, as I'm sure you know, right off of, right off of '79, you know, there's a huge outdoor, off-road, I forget what they call it there, but where you, you know, you take quads and side-by-sides in your Jeep out there, I've been out there myself, and those folks would live here, play, and also here play here north of town. And so that's the type of product where we see the project ultimately constructing. In addition to the single-family uses, we've got the park spaces that Chris mentioned that are very important to him, as well as very important to our future home-building folks. Moving through, this is the general circulation plan, showing the different roadway improvements that we may made as a part of the project. The green represents the arterial roadways, the blue, that's the collector roadways, and then working their way down through, through the local, local streets or minor collector roadway system. Each of the yellow, each of the whitish areas here are the parcels, the future parcels. And we do lose a little bit of scale here in the project, you know, we're not looking at several thousand acres, you know, this being approximately 650 acres, about 600 acres of residential. We don't want to, we don't want you to think or become overwhelmed that this is, this is a huge, you know, Anthem and Merrill Ranch-type project. This is a smaller-scale master plan, if you will. Open space, these are the open space areas that we see as key park locations. There will be additional open space within each of the parcels that are simply needed for a couple of things. One, of course, is onsite retention of stormwater, that's so important to our projects, and to prevent flooding, but also we need smaller neighborhood pocket parks that are more accessible for, you know, the parent and the baby carriage scenario that they can walk to and reach without having to pack, pack the kids into the car and go to a larger place base. These are our walls and entry monument exhibit, and I think we'll get into some more details and aesthetics of that, but this just gives us some locations as to where we see the primary entries being to the project. Obviously, off of Plant Road and off of Adamsville are our primary entries to the project. Here's the example entry, our main entry exhibit, fairly structured design here. A little bit of a farm aesthetic, a little bit of a ranch feel in the, in the rail fence, as well as the, let's call it a little bit more contemporary, I suppose, farm feel. More entry signage giving us a perspective, some ideas of what that will look like. Wall theme, again, we're sticking more contemporary in the colors and the style, you know, Tuscans and tans and that sort of style is something that I think our designers feel like is maybe, you know, 1990, early 2000s, and we're looking to get away from that. Neighborhood park, again, very structured feel, very purposeful, not, not something that you would see necessarily, very, very nature-oriented, but not something that you would see as in a naturally occurring, this very structured, intentional design. So roadway exhibits that I think are awesome, but most landscape architects don't think roadways are awesome. Infrastructure roadways here, this is important exhibit to us because it speaks to the phasing of the project, and what areas of the project you and the community would see development occurring first. The blue crosshatched area obviously denoted as Phase 1, the purple being Phase 2, and so on. And Phase 4, we've denoted that as, as the commercial multifamily area, and then Phase 5 is that, that brown area. So, you know, we don't see the commercials being the last thing to occur, and I know Chris's desires are to see that develop as quickly as possible, to bring some probably needed new uses to the town. But as we know through our experiences, you know, the more rooftops we have there, the sooner that that commercial or mixed use will, will take hold and something will happen. So we're not expecting that it will take until, it will not likely be the last phase, but it will take probably a couple of phases before we see strong interest there in that Infrastructure sewer, a phasing plan there. Obviously, we do have the wastewater treatment plant in close proximity to the project, and so we, we will be able to utilize that right away. Looking at some, a temporary lift station likely being needed here within the first couple of phases, and then an ultimate lift station that'll be needed further to the west side of the project, because we are unfortunately downstream from the lift station we need to, or from the treatment plant, we need to, we need to force mean our sewer back to the treatment plant for processing. And water phasing here as well. These are my favorite exhibits, but again, less exciting for others probably. Landscape architecture, some, some, some of the theme elements that we see within the project, a little bit more detail than what you saw in the previous graphics, as far as materials that will be implemented throughout the community. And the entry monuments, the ramadas, the play structures. And the entry monuments, the ramadas, the play structures, and then ultimately incorporated into the design standards that likely take shape for the, the commercial and multifamily parcel. Any exhibits I can flick, flip back to answer any questions?
Commissioners, any questions?
Just, you know, of course, I live at Merrill Ranch and I'm, we're struggling with getting Hunt Highway expanded to handle the traffic. Now, of course, like you mentioned, Merrill Ranch is a larger development, but, you know, two eighty-seven and the seventy-nine is there, what's the access from, you know, from this development to those kind of main arteries? And what's, and what's the county or whoever, is there going to be enough capacity to handle the additional traffic? That's my question.
Yeah, as a part of our project, we did prepare a traffic impact analysis that was submitted through the town's process for review and, and has been, has been approved. The, we will be making, we'll be dedicating the adjacent roadway right-of-ways, of course, and making the full half-street improvements adjacent to the project. In, in conjunction with that, the project, and I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but I can get those for you. You know, we'll be contributing our, our per-home impact fees. And so I know the project, I think, contributes well over several million dollars towards regional solutions to, to solving traffic problems that could occur surrounding this project. And so as, as I'm sure you're aware, you know, each home that's sold and contributes impact fees toward, to allow the town to, to do or make necessary roadway improvements that are needed that aren't necessarily immediately adjacent to this project. Everything immediately adjacent to this project, we, we have an obligation to construct and, and provide that and turn that over to the town. Traffic signals, roadway improvements, things like that that are immediately adjacent to the project. Obviously, the project, to your point, Commissioner, could create a need for a signal somewhere offsite or could create a need to widen the roadway offsite. And that's where impact fees kick in. And so because of those, those millions of dollars that this project will contribute over time, that'll allow the town then to have the funding needed to implement solutions to those problems.
What's the timing? What's your plan to start, get, you know, get things started, phase one and so on?
Well, this comes back to you on February first for the formal planning commission hearing and we hope approval. And then I think we'd probably be about two weeks away from that or three weeks away from that to get to council for their formal approval of the zoning. And then I think at that point, we're looking at starting preliminary plats on the project. And as you know, that probably takes, I don't know, six or eight months or so, let's say for phase one. So now we're probably looking at the, somewhere around approval of that somewhere probably in December, let's say of, of November, December of twenty-four. And then probably breaking ground, I would suspect sometime in, if everything goes as planned, August of, let's say, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, thank you.
So I'm going back to, I think it was the last neighborhood meeting, we were talking about this exact issue and we're kind of living through it right now on two eighty-seven. As I remember, you all are doing your due diligence in the road for half the road. And my concern is that when we need to widen that, I don't know that there is availability of land on the other side of Adamsville because that's heavily populated, right? So, you know, you're doing a good job up to half the road, but how do we actually get the road widened when we need it?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's a town question because, right, it's misleading.
If I might, Chairman, Commissioner Adam, actually Commissioner as a whole, you know, there, that's a valid question. As being the adjacent property owner, they're physically responsible for their half-street improvements. Beyond that, the, the use of development impact fees, the way it had been set up and through state legislature and how we administer them, that's, that's what those are used for. And the, the count on an annual basis adopts a budget which includes a C I P, Capital Improvement Program, and transportation needs are included in that program. I don't know that her funds can be used for some of that, but I know development impact fee could, you know, could be used for any widening, acquisition of property, those types of things. So basically, it's a town, it would end up ultimately being a town issue if there's enough pressure to have those widened and it would be a town project in order to do it unless other property owners were going to move forward with other types of development. Either, well, for example, on the north side of Adamsville, to the west of this property, there is the potential for future development around there. They'd be responsible for their half of Adamsville when you move out. The southern half, yeah, that's, that's a question. They would have to be engineered and studied as to how much right-of-way would be needed to, to complete the street. There, we already have a certain amount of right-of-way out there. I don't know off the top of my head what the width of it is to, to accommodate a wider street or the rest of the half-street. But ultimately, yes, that would be a town responsibility.
It, it would just seem that now would be the right time to have the discussion, particularly on those properties that may not have a lot of front, front footage, right? And so I don't know if the town's looking at an eminent domain situation or what. But it would seem to me that it's not just a matter of money. We can have the development impact fees, but if you physically can't get that road wider or not without displacing people, I, I think that's just a conversation that should be had here. And I, I don't know how to do this, but I don't know if we could have less development fees and have the developer give up more land where that might be an issue. But we need to get in front of our traffic issues. And I'm not comfortable that we're spending enough time now talking about what's coming our way.
Right, agreed.
Precisely.
Agreed.
Now, that could be a request.
A lot of the problems we've had.
That could be a request that the commission make of council is to just have a discussion. But that, you know, that, it's not part of this particular project, so keep that in mind.
Any other concerns or comments you'd like to voice this time?
Yeah, I, I appreciate Mr. Dobson coming and I know he's put a lot of work into it. And I saw you at your first neighborhood meeting and the passion you spoke with. And I'm, I'm very, very happy that someone who has an attachment to the land and a history here is the one developing. I think this is nothing but a plus. I would just ask, because when I look at this and I see Adamsville Road and I see this wall and I know there's open space behind the wall, but it is, I don't know that from the public's view, if we're seeing any open space. What I'm asking for is a translation of your passion and vision for this being special. I, I don't see it here. This looks like every other P to me. I trust you, but I just don't see where, it's such a special property and it's so close to the district. And I agree with you, you have a huge opportunity. So as you're going through this, I'm looking for that, what makes, what really sets this apart?
We appreciate that comment, Vice Chair and Commissioners. I think part of the problem we have right now or the situation that we're at is, is it's such a high level in the zoning that we're at right now. I think as you be working through those preliminary plats and, and the commissioner sees that preliminary plat come back through to you, then you'll see more of those details. You'll see the landscaping within the first phase, you'll see where the walls laid out, you see where the lots are.
Is your vision stuck a wall along Adamsville or rail fence or?
Well, those, those are, again, those are the things that you'll see. And that we, we, I guess at this point, don't have, we can, we can create, but would be, I think, details that we are not typically providing during a zoning case.
Understood. I would just, I'm just encouraging Mr. Dobson, don't lose that passion and make sure that, so it's visible.
Understood.
Hey, Ryan, if I could speak. No, you're absolutely right and I do want to be a part of that process. And, you know, we do have the estimated floodway that we have there. And I think maybe teaming up with the town to maybe create a really nice community park where you could have baseball fields, soccer fields and basketball. So, I mean, so we do have that where we could do that in it. That's something too that I would be, you know, I'm excited to do it. And that's, that's another part of the project that makes it special is having that little area that's carved out in the floodway where we could put a nice park in there that could be utilized by not just the people in the community, but by the whole town. Where they could have their kids' football practices, they could have their baseball practices. But yeah, I think, you know, spending a little bit of money in infrastructure and maybe getting some other people to donate into it, to the communities, kind of like what Queen Creek did with some of their parks, teaming up with Banner Healthcare. Yeah, that's just, that's, again, that's just something that I would love to see.
Thank you.
My turn? Okay. I'll, I'll just kind of waltz through the, the packet that we were given and then maybe we can just have kind of a dialogue. The first thing that I come to here is ADOT's north-south corridor and your desires to move that further to the west. In talking with some folks that have been deeply involved with this, they highlighted a couple of things to me. One is some cultural resources that exist on the north side of your project, that that freeway alignment as currently shown was designed to go between them so that that culture, those cultural areas were not disturbed and to go through the most narrow portion of the, the Gila River through there. So I'm, I'm just curious to know where are you, where are you with your discussions with ADOT to make this a reality? Because it sounded like that alignment was pretty firm to the people that I've talked to.
Yeah, we agree that they are firm in, in where they would like it to be located. Obviously, their location ends up bisecting the property in a way that we don't see suits the property, doesn't suit the property owner. And we don't think it suits the town long-term to have remnant parcels of this community split, you know, with, with the freeway bisecting through the middle. It's obviously the latter phase of our project and I guess the, I guess, I'm not speaking for Mr. Dobson when I say this, but when ADOT wants to purchase the property, then they can determine where it's located.
It's, it's just kind of like dealing with the railroads around here, you know? It's a big entity to deal with and when they put their foot down and make all those records, and the E I S is out there and everything else, it's tough to move that line.
No, and we, and we respect them by, by all means, but we, you know, at some point, we don't feel like this is a chicken and an egg situation. We feel like we have rights as a property owner to, to continue to move our project forward through the development process. At some point, ADOT may get funding and they may move their, you know, into their tier-two, tier-three and their different studies and move things forward. And when that happens, we're perfectly happy to meet and work through that process with them. But what we're not, in my, again, in my.
Recording in progress.
Oh, great, now I'm being recorded. Okay.
It's, it's just a, just a huge concern in my mind with that line and that, and it shows on the general plan that it's there and all these other things have already been planned and put in place and.
Sure. And, and when they're ready to move that project forward, we're, we're not going anywhere and, and we'll be happy to meet with them and, and figure that out. But what we're not willing to do is, is delay the project, waiting on them to decide what they're going to do or not do.
And this might be something town manager to think about, that we, we might want something in writing from ADOT before we move too far forward on this project. So I don't want to get the town crosswise with ADOT and get caught in the middle on this either. Okay.
If I may interject, I just, anybody willing to fight ADOT, I'm kind of on your side already. Never met a fight that I backed down from, so that's a good thing.
And, and we're not against infrastructure coming in. I see it as a big bonus as well. So obviously, it's, it's smart infrastructure. So having the access to the freeway coming by, obviously, that's a huge thing. And then, you know, that, then we could pivot to maybe something potentially different to commercial as well. So, I mean, granted, there's benefits to both sides. But then again, having the timeframe with them, yes, they're going to do it, no, they're going to do it, Ducey vetoes it and then, you know, here we are. And, and I, actually, I have, I've been working with a lot of state legislators, informing them because there's some of them that are against, you know, infrastructure in the East Valley. And I'm like, well, you should really drive out to State Route twenty-four at nine o'clock in the morning. And they're like, oh, I've never been there. I'm like, well, you probably should before you start, you know, making conclusions on how you vote. So I'm actually, so just to let you know, I, I am and I do see the problems and, and that is, and that will bring in more industry here as well.
It's just a huge question mark and unfortunately, you're kind of the first in the queue here that's, that's impacted by it. Okay, I think I beat up on that one enough. So the second area here is circulation. Reading what you have here, internal circulation, the community will be provided by entrances constructed from Adamsville Road, a minor arterial, a minor arterial to the south and Plant Road, a minor arterial to the east. In the general plan, those are not shown as minor arterials. They are shown as major collectors and mi, and a minor collector. And so, and that's on page sixty-eight of the general plan. They're specifically called out under those two designations. And I, I'm sure that sizing doesn't quite conform to what you're, you're calling out here because a minor collector typically is four lanes with a center turn lane. So that might, that's just something to, you know, again, we're just talking at thirty thousand foot level.
I, I, I'm, I'm confident that the roadway classifications we have shown here, although they may disagree with the general plan, are in conformance with what the, the town engineer has them classified as in, in his mind. So.
That's, that's a problem then because the other thing that happens here is I don't know how you'd ever take a minor arterial and go through the residential area east of here, here to go in through town when that's basically a residential street. So we got a big problems on the, as, as we, as we try to move traffic to the east. And I think that's what my cohorts in climate here have talked about, is just being able to move traffic here. And then you've got to move traffic for at least two-thirds of a mile west of here and circle back to two eighty-seven as the current circulation is set up.
So maybe I didn't understand your statement earlier. So we have these classified as minor arterials, but the general plan has them listed as major collectors?
One, well, the Adamsville Road is listed as a major collector and Plant Road is listed as a minor collector in the general plan. And they're specifically called out as that.
So, so a minor arterial is a larger roadway than those two that you.
Yes, absolutely.
So again, we are, I, I think our traffic and the, the town engineer have asked us to, to create minor arterials, which would be larger, not because our project is requiring those, but because he sees those as being necessary for the town overall. I'm not sure why the general plan was adopted with, with major collectors for those two roadways.
Well, and it was only done two years ago and there was a lot of thought that went through it because we all sweated through that process, so.
I understand.
And particularly Plant Road, Plant Road basically goes nowhere. It goes up as far as almost the Gila River and, and it ends Adamsville Road. And calling that a minor arterial is, it's like a, building a four-lane bridge when you have a cart path coming to it. So there's a lot of stuff here that when, when you bring this back, hopefully you'll have all this addressed. Because I've just, things are just popping up in my eyes and causing problems.
Well, thank you.
And then on the second paragraph there, you talk about Hiscox Lane will be designed following the town's enhanced Collector Road Street, featuring a landscape median, detached multiple pa, multiple-use path and parking on either side. Now, I have never seen a collector designed with, with a loaded collector with parking on either side of it. That's intended to move traffic, not park cars.
And so those, the, the Collector Road, parallel parking would be adjacent to the open space areas for access to the park space.
So will, will you provide an extra lane so that you're not blocking the, the bike lanes?
Yes.
You might just note that in there because it doesn't describe that, but that would be a good clarification.
Okay.
The other thing that I noticed in your development standards that you called out in section nine, for single-family low-density, you called for a twenty-foot face of garage to front setback. But in all the others, it's eighteen. So I got curious and looked up, you know, what the common cars are today. And a Camry is sixteen feet, so we've got no problem there, either of those it fits in. But a Ford F-one-fifty quad cab five-point-five-foot bed, which is apparently the most common truck in America right now, it's nineteen-point-three feet long. That's cutting it darn close in the twenty. And, but you've got two others that are eighteen, so that means if someone parks it there, they're going to be hanging into the sidewalk. So I think we need to at least have twenty-foot setbacks so that we can at least park those vehicles and not have them hang into the sidewalk.
We'll definitely look at that for sure, yes.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Sorry. In Section 11 of the Landscape Architecture, you talk about pedestrian circulation, but it looks like we're completely cut off from trying to allow anybody to move in from the west. And I know we'll have development happening in that direction, so I, hopefully, we plan, as we get down to the details of it, how we have some sort of a interconnectivity with other developments as well.
Yes, understood.
Sorry, I made notes all over through here. And this is, I'm, I'm looking at, and I, I made my notes on Exhibit F. Your exhibits all show what you call out as a floodway up in the northwestern corner of the prod, process, of the project, sorry. I think what you're calling out there is a 100-year floodplain. When I pulled up the most recent FEMA maps, it does not match what you show there. And in addition, there is a large wash coming in from the south that, that will need to be taken care of.
Yes, that's correct. Both of those are correct, and yes, we will manage the offside drainage flow from the south through the parcel, and connect that to the north, yes.
Just want to make sure that, that's out there as well.
No problem.
Your main entry plan, you have turf. I am adamantly against turf that is not usable, and this is just purely aesthetic turf. Serves no purpose other than to use water, and we're in a water-scarce area. So I, I definitely would not support turf purely for aesthetic reasons, it has to be usable.
Okay.
I, I appreciated the drawing that you gave us of your neighborhood park. The one comment that I would make is, and you have areas here called open turf, and this is where I think turf, turf is often, but if you crowd that open turf with trees, then you lose the viability of it being a play area for pickup football, or pickup baseball, or pickup soccer. So I guess my advice is, is to try to give those areas a more open feel, and move your trees to the, to the edges where they can provide shade, but leave an open area there so you can throw a football, or baseball, or something like that, so it's truly usable turf.
Understood.
And please don't put turf on slopes.
Okay.
It's not playable or usable. On your exhibit for your modified major collector, are, are you proposing just a ribbon curve here, or are you proposing curb and gutter?
Let me find that one.
That one right there.
Yeah, that one, I'm sure, would be curb and gutter.
Okay, that's the clarification I wanted. And then, on Exhibit O, infrastructure sewer phasing, I appreciate that you are thinking short-term and long-term. And, and what I'm thinking about is, even thinking further long-term, we have another development of about three-quarters of a mile to the west of you, that is going to be in the exact same situation. They're going to need to build some sort of a lift station. And this is to the town, because this is where we might have to contribute some funds, but if we don't put the capacity in this system right now, then future development is going to have to either figure out some way to go down into the Gila River, or go around it on Adamsville Road. And if we've got improvements in, they're going to have a heck of a time, so it might be good for us right now to either put a parallel pipe in, that's probably better with a lift station, because you want to move stuff through quickly. Or even thinking the future, if our, because I really, having operated them, I really don't like lift stations, it might be better to have a regional lift station three-quarters of a mile to the west at some future date, rather than this one here, and a second or third one to the west. But I'm just thinking we should really look hard at that corridor, and see if we should parallel, I mean, if they're going to put in a, pick a number, an 8-inch line right now, maybe we should parallel that with another 8-inch dry line, so that we don't have to tear up all this area again to put a second line in, and then have that next developer buy into whatever we forward on that, through some sort of a buy-in agreement. So I'm, I'm throwing that out, because that'd be something the town needs to look at. And then, I, I think I would appreciate just knowing what your flows, your anticipated flows will be for your, both your sewer and, and your water demands, so that we have in mind what a development like this takes.
Understood.
As far as water, and then how much weak clean water will be coming back out of it. And I think with that, I've spoken enough, so.
Thank you, Chairman. Any other questions from anyone else?
I'm so glad you're on our side. The detail, yeah.
Now, we, we really appreciate, you know, you guys coming in and talking to us about this, both of you being here, both the owner and the owner's representative, and having the technical skill here, and responding to what we're, what we're asking, what we're concerned with. So we are, highly anticipate looking at, at this again, and coming down from the 30,000-foot level to the, to the 5,000-foot and lower, as you bring those preliminary plats and other drawings back to us to take a look at. And we are extremely supportive of the concept that you espoused here of having parks that people can walk to, so that truly is usable, and, and that, that has a really good feeling in the community, so thank you very much.
No problem, thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you all very much, appreciate you letting us come and talk, and like I said, and I got, I got all your notes, Lonnie, so there's quite a bit of them. So we'll come back, and hopefully we can get everything, all your concerns answered.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Staff, is there any other comments at this point in time? This public hearing, I know it's a public hearing, so it's just, we're having a discussion here, so.
This is just a work session, so no action, no public hearing. We plan to, we plan to have a public hearing for this, the first meeting of February. That is the tentative schedule at this time.
Okay. With that, Commission Members, anything else on that item? Okay. Director's report. Marty, are you doing that this evening? Larry, are you doing that?
A director, interim director, underlined, will defer to the senior planner.
Western Crossing update, they've put down their base paving. They're looking to get some of their inspections to head towards substantial completion. They've widened Centennial, and they've done the base paving for 287 as well. They are looking to finish up this month on that paving, whether not stopping them, or any other unforeseen circumstances. But they're heading towards completion at this point. Should I move on to the next one? That's all I have for the Western Crossing. Scheduled public hearing for the code amendments, I did say it in the previous one, but I want to reiterate, the, with this recommendation, we will take the code amendments to their first reading, and public hearing to Town Council on February 5th. And then, from there, the code amendments will have a second reading on February 19th, and council will also be able to take action on that time as well. Florence 287 work session, we have that situated for January 18th, this upcoming meeting, not next week, but the week following. It'll be similar to what we had here with CD Farms, we'll go over the narrative, the exhibits, we'll have the representatives here in order to go through it, and you can ask them questions. So before that, or, we'll have that before we move on to public hearing, so everyone's on the same page about what this is. That concludes the report.
Thank you. Commission Members, any questions of staff on that?
No, no questions, no.
Call to the Commission, current events. Okay, just watch your calendars, there's, I know we're doing, what is it, 3rd Tuesdays, or 3rd Saturday, 3rd Fridays downtown right now?
3rd Fridays?
3rd Fridays, and-
3rd Fridays, and home tour's coming up on February-
February 10th is home tour. Tickets are on sale now, online, for $20. And we, I believe we also have physical tickets that you can purchase at the Community Center slash Library. $20 now, $25 day of, February 10th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
I love that you were almost giddy about that.
That's a fun event to see some of these homes, and what people have done to them, to preserve the historic nature of them, so highly recommend it.
She's always so reserved, and that was-
Mr. Copalongo, your favorite motion?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Motion from Commissioner Copalongo, and a second from Vice Chair Adam to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.